Good evening. It is 6:00 PM, so we'll begin our meeting. Called the meeting of the Mayor and Council of City of Carrollton for February to order. If you'll all stand with me and have the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You'll remain standing. And Councilman Bridges, would you do our invocation? Yeah, that's a good way to start.
Let us go to God in prayer. Dear great God of heaven, thank you, Lord God, for this day, Lord. Thank you for waking us up this morning, dear heavenly Father, to start us on our way, Lord. Lord, I just pray right now that you bind what's hindering us from loving each other, dear heavenly Father. Lord, help us to fix what's broken in us, oh God. Lord, help us to change our mindset, so God, so we can be free to know that we belong to you, oh God, to help one another. Lord God, I just pray right now for all the people that has been affected by this COVID-19, dear heavenly Father. Some even lost their lives, Lord God. I ask you to restore their families, Lord God. Lord, I just pray for the homeless right now. Lord, it's getting cold, Lord. Just, just touch them, Lord. Just keep them warm with your love and brace, dear heavenly Father. Lord God, I just pray right now for the city of Carrollton, the city council, and the mayor, and the members, Lord, that you will strengthen us, God. Give us the strength to do the things that we have to do to lead, Lord. We have to lead by examples, oh God, where we have to love equal always, determine effect return, service and helping inspire people, dear heavenly Father, because that's what we do. We are servant. We serve, dear heavenly Father, and not looking to be served. But as we go through this meeting on tonight, Lord God, that you will help us, keep us in unity, dear heavenly Father, and so we can strive to make our city better, our people better, so we can be better together, dear heavenly Father. Because we are most powerful, Lord God, when we are one. We can't have division to be in unity. We have to love to be in unity. And these are all of the blessings in your Son, Jesus Christ's name, I pray. Let us all say amen.
Thank you, Councilman Bridges, for that awesome invocation. At this time, we'll have our citizens' comments, and I'll remind you that these citizens' comments are being made. We give a three-minute time allotment. The comments cannot be derogatory. They are not to be addressed to staff, but just to make us aware of your concerns. And at this time, we'll let Mr. Triplet take care of our citizens' comments.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like to ask Ariel Nix to the podium, 137 Glendale Boulevard, Temple.
I'm speaking today to urge city council members to reimagine Carroll County and Carrollton as we know it. Oftentimes, when I'm talking with county leaders and officials, I'm often told that I focus on all the negatives. But I think that ignoring injustice and inequalities in our community is a false sense of positivity that is toxic and results in stagnation. I don't want to be negative. I love Carrollton. I love the people that I've met here. I graduated from UWG. I want to raise my kids here, and it actually takes a lot of optimism for me to overcome my fear of public speaking, to come here and hope that maybe something I say will make a difference. I don't believe that Carrollton is exceptional or removed from the systemic racism that plagues our nation because I've seen it manifest itself here and because I know that our community is capable of making changes for the better, and I think you'll all agree. Because what we've been doing isn't okay, and criminalizing people for not being able to afford shelter isn't okay. And overfunding the police and ignoring other avenues of social services and community development is not okay. People deserve to be housed, fed, healthy, and loved, and I'm not an accountant, and I don't claim to know all the inner workings of your jobs or like what happens with the city budget, but I do know that a budget is a reflection of priorities. And it would seem that Carrollton, and not just Carrollton, but every single city that I look at, where my sister lives in Washington and where my mom lives, that policing is a priority in America, and it seems like a very expensive Band-Aid solution to housing and helping people. Residents have been very vocal about the need for affordable housing, and I hope that you all will listen. I'm glad to hear that it seems like the unaffordable apartments that were slated for the North Cliff Street area don't seem to be moving forward at this time, but I just urge you as the leadership to talk directly with members of the community who are impacted by this homelessness, income inequality, and food insecurity, to find solutions that don't involve criminalization to get to the roots of this problem.
Thank you. Mr. Triplet, are there any? That was the only citizen's comment we have. Okay. At this time, we will move on to the minutes of our previous meeting. You have had a copy of those. Do I have a motion? Have a motion to adopt the minutes from the January meetings. Do I have a second? Okay. Are there any additions or corrections? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. We have our mayor and council announcements, and we'll start with Ms. Bridges.
I just want to say again, as a city council member of Carroll County, Carrollton City, rather, I just want to thank everybody for reaching out to the community to do the things that we can do. I'm not saying we could do everything. I'm not saying we can handle every situation. But we, as the city council members, are doing everything that is in our power to do, to help our constituents in our city. And I just want to tell everybody, thank you. I pray for, like I said, I pray for the ones that are been affected and impacted by the COVID-19. I also pray for the frontline workers that reach out every day to these people in the hospital and emergency rooms and their families to make sure that they got different sites to set up to get these shots done as fast as possible. And I just want to just thank everybody for all the good work and the fellowship and the leadership that is going on in Carrollton. I really appreciate that. I just want to say thank you.
I take a moment to thank all those people who are working tirelessly in healthcare in our community. I've been in Tanner Hospital and was lucky enough to get a COVID shot two weeks ago. But I've been in just and being able to walk out, and there's a lot of folks there that can't walk out. And there's a lot of nurses and doctors that are working crazy hours. I'd like to say thank you to them. I'd also say thank you to our local group, Community Foundation, that has worked really hard to do a survey on extended-stay hotels and the plight of the homeless here in our town. And everybody, this is open to everybody to read this study that has just been completed. I believe it's been public for about a week on their website. And we are working with a problem that didn't happen overnight, and, but we are trying to make some effort to change things for the better. So, thank you for your input.
Councilman Ledbetter?
I'm excited to see Dr. Kelly here tonight, the new president of the University of West Georgia. I was blessed to be on the selection committee that brought Dr. Kelly to Carrollton. And it was, it was so obvious to most everyone on the committee that he was the best candidate for our university here. And I'm excited to hear from him tonight. I appreciate him coming. We are, we are very excited about the future of the university here in Carrollton, and I really do appreciate him coming tonight. I just want to say, too, that, you know, there are a lot of city employees doing really difficult work in our community that, you know, go the extra mile. I know our police people, our police force, you know, they go to the trouble of taking food to citizens that are in need. They do extra things that nobody ever hears about. And I just want to tell the police and the fire people and all the city employees that do those extra things, thank you. That's all I've got. Thank you.
I love, second that, and wanted to also, as far as pointing out the good job the city employees do, I agree with you, Brett. But one person that, in my opinion, is sort of a workhorse behind the scenes that's here tonight, is here every night, every time we meet, and that's Tommy Holland. I just want to tell Tommy, I appreciate the work you do. You're an unsung hero to a lot of the things that happen, a good old engineering side of stuff that nobody really cares about. But the Bankhead Corridor project, I'm the only one up here that actually voted on that a couple of years ago. And I know it was a, had a lot of people on both sides of that project, but it's getting close to being complete now. It's not done yet. But it's looking really good, and Tommy was, he was one of the main ones that worked on that to keep us on schedule. So if you haven't been out there, I'd encourage you to ride down Bankhead Corridor. It is looking, looking very nice. And that said, I hope you get around to fixing Noonan Road sooner than later. Because I'm getting tired of getting yelled at. So, thank you. Thank you, Tommy.
Thank you, council members. And, you know, this morning, when it was, we were having snow flurries, and it was thirty-something degrees, and, you know, I know a lot of times people don't realize, but it takes all of us working together, and there were those poor old sanitation guys out there picking up our garbage at, you know, seven o'clock in the morning in the coal. And we have so many good employees here, and they do such a good job. And, you know, I just really do appreciate, and it's, like you said, sometimes it seems like we focus more on the public safety, but, you know, it takes a lot. I mean, you know, if your garbage isn't picked up, and then you turn that faucet on and you don't have water, and you go down the road and you hit a pothole. I mean, you know, it takes them all, but for the Noonan Road travelers, we are going to get some paving done out there. But, you know, that's just an example of the planning and everything that goes on is, you know, they had to do some utility improvements, so the logical thing was, you do those before you pave. You know, you don't want to go in there and pave the street and then have to go back in there and cut it up. But yeah, it's, you know, it's the dead of winter, and you don't pave streets in the dead of winter, so. But those are things that, we just have a great staff here. And I'll give credit to Mr. Grizzard. He does well with maintaining and operating, you know, all of these employees. And he has great department heads that do a great job, and we're just so blessed. The other thing I want to remind you of is we have a splotch coming up in March, so be thinking about that. Tell your neighbors to get out and vote. You know, just if you think about it, how much money we collect from sales tax, so that one penny that comes not just from our citizens and our property owners, but people coming into town. And I know a lot of people don't realize how much really comes into the city from outside, travelers. I mean, you know, you've got school activities, you've got cultural art activities, you've got shopping opportunities, and all those things together. And we are becoming more and more a destination place, so, you know, we're so thankful for that, and we appreciate our merchants. But make sure you give consideration to that. You know, every time we pass a splotch project that saves us on our property tax, those people that are property owners. So, we've got some good projects. We're going to replace a fire station that's in desperate need of repair and new fire equipment. We've got paving and sidewalks, and those things always improve our city. And those are things that will service our citizens well. So be thinking about that, and we'll have, you'll hear more about that in the coming weeks to publicize that. Okay, at this time, we will have our city managers' announcements and comments, and I didn't forget you today. Aren't you impressed? Two months in a row?
Thank you. Oh, just, I wanted to mention several projects that we're, that are underway. At the urging of Councilman Bridges, we've paved the walking trail over off Robert Hendrickson. It looks beautiful. A backfield that they graced it, and it's very attractive and a very safe and easy-to-use trail there. And I know those citizens over there enjoying it. They're resurfacing a number of the basketball courts and replacing the fencing around those. That's been needed for a while, so we're very proud of that. The playground over off Robert Hendrickson is one of the next things they're going to do. They were going to replace the equipment there. We are having, we're looking, from a traffic analysis standpoint, at crosswalks on Maple to see if that will work at the urging of Councilman Uglum. Councilman Ledbetter has talked to us about, and we plan to do a crosswalk on Stewart near Brown Street at the top of the hill there. It won't be directly at Brown, but it'll be, there's a blind spot on that hill. If you, if you drive in that area, you'll know where I'm talking about. And we're planning to run a sidewalk down Brown, and that will take, that will connect sidewalk all the way from Stewart to the library. So you'll be able to walk on a hard surface that whole way. We are looking at a number of projects and facelifts and around the docks on North Lake Shore, replacing those picnic tables, and we're looking at putting a boardwalk along the lake. So we've got a lot of things planned and a lot of things that are underway. And the Green Belt Spur that has just been built that ties our downtown to Tanner and the Southmore offices is nearing completion. There'll be a ribbon cutting February the 11th at 2:00, so we're very excited about that. So, a lot going on, and it's, it's done well, and I'll go back to what Betty said on Noonan. The paving window closes from about Christmas to around April. We have to rebid paving. That will be done before that paving window opens again, but as soon as it warms up enough, we're going to pave Noonan. But we, I've never done a paving project or a road project where anybody liked it. They always hated it, and they always complained. And when it's done, they love it. And so I could just name project after project that fall under that. But it's been a lot of utility work done under Noonan. There was a lot of utility work. Y'all may remember probably ten years ago on Noonan Street between Dixie and Bankhead, that took a year. But we, we did it right. We did all the sewer work. We did all the water work. And when we were done, before we started that job, the fire flow at the courthouse was about 225 gallons a minute. It's over a thousand. It was over a thousand when we got done, and the lanes were safer. And it, it did a great, we did a great, Tommy and his folks did a great job out there. And again, it always takes longer than we want, and nobody likes it while it's going on, but we're always proud of it when we're done. We try to do things right, and we try to manage your money wisely. So, thank you.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda items for consideration? Have a motion? Do I have a second? Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussions or additions to be added to the agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. And our first item on our agenda is our University of West Georgia president, Dr. Brendan Kelly. And Dr. Kelly, we're so glad you're here. We have been, as Councilman Ledbetter said, so blessed to have Dr. Kelly here. And he came during all the COVID stuff, but he definitely has hit the ground running, and we're so glad that you're here.
Well, I'm grateful for that, and I'm grateful to be here. Thank you. And you're right, my timing was perfect. When you get to show up to a university that has no students and no employees because we are closed, I thought they were pulling a fast one on me. I also appreciate the fact that this is the first time I've, I've been able to come to city council. I'm grateful for the invitation. I'm also grateful that you put this sign that says, "When the judge calls your name, please stand here." That's very friendly. I've, I've said it to many of you, I chose the University of West Georgia as much as it chose me. And being in Carrollton, having been able to spend the last months here, despite the fact that building community was something that we were doing over Zoom and in one-on-one meetings, it's still meeting all of the expectations that I thought it would had. I looked at Carrollton as a place where you could go to college and have a really wonderful intimate experience, where you might experience something like family, but have all the opportunity that Metropolitan Atlanta provides. And that is a world-class opportunity, and I certainly haven't been disappointed. We did do something that we probably will be looked at as odd. We, amidst a pandemic, decided to launch strategic planning because the future is, quite frankly, more important than, than the past for us. Higher education's lost 10% of its workforce since April 1st. It has been a transformative year in our industry. From my perspective, the most important thing that we could do was get, get the University of West Georgia well out in front of everybody else. And I'm proud to say that now we are completing that process, and the next couple of weeks, we'll be share, be able to share all of the details of that new strategic plan with you. We've had more than 1,300 people participate in that process through 300 hours of discovery sessions and a hundred different discovery sessions. It's been a wonderful process, really rooted in three ideas that I know I've had the chance to share with all of you. And I'm not as succinct as Councilwoman Bridges, who can do an invocation in one word, "So well timed." That was fantastic. But we went to relevance and competitiveness and placemaking, and I appreciate that one of our graduates was our citizen speaker this evening because relevance is critical. Relevance in the 21st century for what a university needs to do for college students is, that is our business. And we have to answer that question in a different way than it was answered in the 20th century. Now, college students, when I went to college, I went to college, and it was great. And we could have done a thousand things, and all of those would have been great because the fact that we were away and starting our lives was enough. My, I have a daughter in college now, and I have my second child that'll be going next year. The college students we're in service to now are much more savvy. They hire college to do something for them. And we have to make certain that we live up to that. Us pursuing relevance is critical. Us making certain that we are competitive in a modern age is critical, and we are dedicating ourselves to that at the University of West Georgia. And finally, and one that, you know, my, my first conversation with, with several of you have, was really based around place. You know, when, today I had a chance to visit with a former citizen of Ann Arbor, Michigan. Ann Arbor is one of the great university towns and centers of commerce in the United States and just 35 minutes out of city center Detroit. I look at Carrollton as much the same way. It's got that destination quality. A university that sits among the top 250 universities in the country, but in terms of assets, we far exceed that ranking. And the opportunity to create place that is special and connected is one that I look forward to building with all of you as we move forward. I will say that spring semester at the University of West Georgia looks very different than fall. In fall, we shut things down and went primarily virtual. And while we had students living on campus, we might as well locked them in a residence hall and left them there because there just was a period of us trying to figure out how to function in a COVID environment. What we learned is that college students want desperately to be with each other. They didn't come to college just so that they could go to class. They came to build community, and they were asking for that experience. You know, the other night I went to Publix, as I often do, and it takes us an hour to get out because every aisle is a new conversation. I got to meet a student who didn't come back last fall because he couldn't do virtual learning. It wasn't a successful opportunity for him over the summer, so he decided to wait it out until we're back face-to-face. There's a lot of students like Alex who I got a chance to meet, and, and I'm proud to say that last spring, pre-COVID, we were 75% face-to-face. This spring, we are 64.9% face-to-face, and the level of satisfaction, connectedness, and happiness across the campus is exceptional. That's with all of the wonderful safety measures that have made us successful all year. And it hasn't slowed physical projects. As many of you are passing up and down Maple Street, you see the Richards College business is basically on time. I say basically on time because depending on which staff member asks the construction company, we get a different destination time. When I ask, it's always on time, but when others ask, it seems to move a bit. Nonetheless, that structure is coming along. It looks beautiful. I've toured every inch of it. The amount of wiring that was produced here in Carrollton is exceptional, and it's going to be a real game changer for that campus. One that's, it's going to be an invitation to so many. I'd also say that the student success for our 13,419 students is certainly not lost during COVID. We had a lot of students putting in a lot of hours under circumstances that they didn't sign up for. That didn't keep more than 1,200 students from being on the president's list, and that is a perfect 4.0. It also didn't keep our athletes off the field. While we shut athletics down in the United States during the fall, we did come back with a lot of spring sports and COVID protocols. If you go to the 7,000-seat Coliseum on campus to enjoy a basketball game, I'll tell you two things that you're going to see. One, we only allow about 952 people into those 7,000 seats, but they're all pleased to be there, and you have student athletes that are so grateful for the support. You'll also see a game day experience where we've tried to reach out to others. Concessions keep rolling into more interesting things, so while you might expect a hot dog and cotton candy, Saturday was, you could also get an Andouille sausage and a toasted bun with a seasoned aioli and a falafel along with tzatziki. That is sophistication. That invites more people into that experience. And that's really based around the theory that you don't have to love basketball or soccer, which played on Sunday, or softball that starts this week, to go and enjoy being part of a community. If 2020 taught us anything, us coming together for all kinds of reasons is important, and we're going to try to dedicate ourselves to making certain that that's an invitation, not only for every student, faculty, and staff member at UWG, but to the community at large. I'm grateful to be here, really grateful to be here. And every single week and month, as we meet more people and become more deeply involved in the community, all I see is opportunity and certainly the delivery on the promises that I thought were in store when we came to Carrollton and to Georgia. So thank you so much for having me. I will take any question, criticism, complaint that you may have.
Oh, don't open that. You're a brave man.
Dr. Kelly, what were the national awards that University of West Georgia just won last week?
Well, we've, we've, we've done a few. We were ranked in U.S. News &amp; World Report, again, in the top 250 institutions in the, in the country by a complex rating. But we were also, four of our programs, we were recognized as some of the top online programs in the United States. And that's both at the doctoral level, the master's level, but also at the undergraduate level, best undergraduate online degree. That's an incredibly competitive marketplace because, keep in mind, in-person learning is primarily a nonprofit delivery in the United States. Online is delivered from all over the world, from all kinds of different companies and institutions. And because UWG's been well out in front of the marketplace for years, we were recognized on those four areas, and we couldn't be more pleased.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Hi, Dr. Kelly. I had the opportunity to talk into one of the students the other day. She was well pleased with Ohio- She was well pleased with, with, you know, how everything is going at the university. And, um, she's back in class somewhat. And so, uh, I just wanted to share that with you and, uh, she's very excited. And I had the opportunity to talk with her and she used some of my skills for her class, so.
I love that.
I like to do that. So I just want to let you know, uh, you're doing the right thing with, you know, gradually getting people back in the classrooms and, uh, taking out a proper protocol that you need to do so. And I want to just say thank you.
Thank you. Well, and I will tell you the philosophy they were going about, uh, basically everything is a very student-centric one. The barometer I use to know whether we're doing well is, uh, really marked by the five or 600 students I've had to sit and talk with over the last few weeks. And I'm, I'm so glad you're hearing the same thing.
Also congratulate you on picking the best ward to live in, Ward 3. Good job. Smart man.
Appreciate that.
You know, anytime you need something, you need to call your councilman too.
I will, well, at least we have another advocate for Noonan Road, so.
I'll get you his cell phone number.
Uh, well, Dr. Kelly, we really appreciate you coming tonight. And, and I don't have to say my excitement of the relationship that we have with the university and with the city. And I, I just look forward so much to the future development of that. And, um, I appreciate all your efforts to help us get that underway. And it's been a, it's been a great pleasure working with you so far. And we look forward to a long, long time of working with you, so.
Well, I'm grateful for that. Thank you all so much.
You're welcome.
You're welcome.
Okay, uh, the mayor pro tem appointment. Do I have a motion, a nomination for mayor pro tem for the next year?
So move that motion.
Was there a motion?
Not.
Yeah, let me, I'll, I'll go ahead and make the motion. I, I, I just wanted to say thank you, uh, to, I guess, the previous administration for letting me be the mayor or for voting me in at mayor pro, pro tem, uh, and for two years. And so I am certainly happy, uh, to pass the baton, so to speak, to someone else. And I, and I've, uh, we've, we've all talked about it, um, individually. And, uh, I believe it should be a unanimous decision. But I want to nominate Jaclyn Bridges, very well deserved. She's, she's come along as quickly as anyone possibly could to figure out what in the world it is we do up here. And look forward, well, I'll, I'll make the motion for Jaclyn and hopefully it will get a second and passed. But I think she would do a great job. That's a motion.
Okay.
I'd like to circuit that motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second to, um, appoint Councilman Bridges as my mayor pro tem. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none, okay. Councilman Bridges, you will be my mayor pro tem for the next year. Yay. At this time, the next item on the agenda is a bid award on the green belt on the University of West Georgia College of Business. Mr. Holland?
Before, uh, Mr. Holland presents this, I just want to remind you, these are projects that we do, uh, for the university and they pay for these projects. We, we charge a, uh, small administrative fee, but, uh, it has to do with the way they encumber their money past the, uh, end of the fiscal year. So, uh, this is not a cost that the city incurs. It's something the university pays on, for both of these projects.
Yes, ma'am. The first project brought before you is the Green Belt University of West Georgia College of Business project, which will provide ADA accessible path from ACOG Drive to the new College of Business that's under construction at this time. The project scope consists of removing and replacing approximately 170 feet, linear feet of existing Carrollton green belt. Also constructing a 60-foot linear steel beam bridge. And numerous other installations such as drainage installation and handrails and lighting and electrical installation, bike racks, bollard installation and various other items that go along with the project. Also, the coordination will involve University of West Georgia project manager and project engineer as, as well as the city engineer. The project would be financed under the University of West Georgia, by, financed by the University of West Georgia and constructed under the IGA agreement, just like the city manager's just had spoken. An RFP was issued for the project and we received bids on January 21st. Received six bids, the one being Llewellyn Construction at $391,621.90. Integrated Construction and Nobility Incorporated, their bid was $427,705.04. Carl Owen Construction bid was $474,000 even. Triscapes Incorporated was $492,395. Albion General Contractors Incorporated was $462,700. Piedmont Construction Company, their bid was $548,996,000. This was actually a request for proposal and that being the fact, we actually grade the contractors 50% on their bid amount and 50% on their experience and references that they provide. And that's detailed more on your bid tally, tally that you have before you. At this time, the city staff asked the mayor and council to award the Green Belt University of West Georgia College of Business project to Llewellyn Construction in the amount of $391,621.90. And this is the same Llewellyn that actually installed 95% of the green belt that we have around the city. So it's a real good contractor.
Do I have a motion to accept the bid of Llewellyn Construction for $391,000?
So move.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
A second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any, any opposed, same sign. Okay, all right. The next one is a bid award for Stroger parking lot improvements.
Yes, ma'am. This is also at the University of West Georgia and falls under the same intergovernmental agreement between the city and the college. Uh, the University of West Georgia Stroger Hall Parking Lot Project consists of demolition of existing asphalt parking lot consisting of approximately 48 spaces and replacing the new park with a new parking lot layout of approximately 98 spaces. The main project, um, the project will consist of grading and installing the new basin pavement and asphalt and stormwater and lighting for the project. We all, we issued an RFP and the bids were also received on January 21st of 2021. We received six bids for this as well. Helix Group Incorporated bid was $352,244.95. Piedmont Paving Incorporated bid was $454,930.39. Carl Owen Construction's bid was $489,000 even. Prime Foundation LLC bid was $482,375.55. Triscap Incorporated bid amount was $588,757.61. Northwest Georgia Paving Incorporated bid amount was $607,191.90. And this also was an RFP and we rated them based on their experience as well as the bid amount. Based on that, city staff requests the mayor and council to award the University of West Georgia Stroger Parking Lot Project to Helix Group Incorporated in the amount of $352,244.95.
Okay. Do I have a motion to award the contract to Helix Group for $352,244.95?
So move.
I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carried.
Mayor Kason, I'd like to point out something about this bid that is a, some, a data point that may be useful to you in the future. That's over $7,000 of parking space to add parking. And that's in an existing lot where there's very little grading to be done. So as development comes into our downtown, uh, if, if it uses parking and doesn't provide parking or if you hear at a staff level, we're trying to make people build their own parking, just realize the value in that parking. It's, you can easily spend $10,000 of space. If it's elevated parking, if it's a parking deck, you can spend $20,000 of space. So when we require a business to build parking or an apartment complex or whatever, we're not being unnecessarily hard on people. It's a, it's a very expensive product and this, these bids, you know, indicate that. And had, had Helix not bid this project, we'd have been at, at over 10,000 of space, uh, on the next low bidder. Thank you.
Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Do I have a second? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Meeting adjourned.